All right. All right, it's ten o'clock, we will start our morning workshop of Clickatet County Board of Commissioners. We will start with HR Director Robin.
Good morning Commissioners, as you know, we received a notice of resignation from the project coordinator in the Natural Resources and Economic Development Department, so I'm asking for verbal permission to post the project coordinator at steps one through three. Yes.
Mr. Anderson, the yes, that's three yeses, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move forward with the department update from Public Works, County Engineer Gordy Kelsey. Mr. Hunter.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Thank you, good morning.
Dan, thanks, sir. Do you have time later for chat after?
It was on last Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's a heck of a presentation right there.
Yeah. I was drawing a blank for a second. Photo presentation.
Am I gonna get this in an email form?
This is all the pictures, the historical pictures for the courthouse that you've already looked at.
Oh, okay, never mind it.
Yeah, it's, there's a packet. I'll hold them on, and it's got the proposal on it.
Zoom in on them or something.
Yeah, you've seen them all before, but it's packaged up for you guys now in more of a formal format. So I'll do that, since Genie's here and Tracy, they both worked on this project. I'm gonna go ahead and summarize, and I asked them to fill in the blanks if I missed important details. But, so these are the photos that you and I, Dan, you and I went and looked at and picked out and put together. And so the last time we met, we talked about having each floor would be have a theme, and so they put together the photos for floor, first floor is towns and cities, and that's the first section, they're all divided by a blue tab, but they're the same photos that you've seen before. And then second floor is farming and industry, and the third floor is recreation and heritage. And so Genie wants to find another nine photos, so she's gonna go talk to the historic societies from the smaller towns and see what she can find. I know we, maybe something from the Clickatet Mill and other, other locations. So there'll be more that will be put together, and so she's put together a cost proposal that you see there, and I think she talked about doing it more on a tackle a floor at a time. And then move, move on to the next floor once the first floor gets finished. So you have the cost before you, and it's, it's very, very reasonable in my estimation.
I had to make sure those logs were in there because that to me is still fascinating.
So in general, that's it. If we wanna move forward with something like this, and maybe there's more you wanna add that I left out, or?
I'll just answer any questions.
Oh, size, size of the pictures, thirty-six by twenty-four. So are some of them gonna be like several?
There'll be one graphic, and that would be the one that would be right up here that you can see from the outdoor entrance, which a graphic is three photos all of the same. So, and the rest of them are all.
And these are all the wraparound canvases?
Yeah, yes.
I appreciate this coming to fruition on the budget that we were all hoping it would all come to fruition. So that, that makes me very excited. Any questions from my seatmates? Mr. Anderson, kind of, you know, the packet in front of you, the cost estimate was first floor sixteen canvases, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, second floor seventeen canvases, nine hundred and ninety-nine, third floor fourteen canvases, six hundred and seventy-two, for a total of forty-seven canvases, total cost of project, three thousand eighty-nine dollars.
That sounds amazing. Great job, lady.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm very happy.
I was expecting another zero on that.
I can add one.
No, I think everybody that was involved did a great job, and I think they all could kinda see the vision of the, the project, so I think everybody did a great job of maintaining those costs down so that we could make sure we see the vision come to fruition. So I don't know, are you here looking for verbal approval, or are you?
Yes, yes, please.
Is anybody ready to give verbal approval, or do you wanna hold it over chat?
Nope, it's good for me.
I'm good. Do it. All right, thank you. That's verbal enough. Considering I have no voice after today, so.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Okay, well, whip through the rest of the stuff pretty quick. We have one thing on your agenda, that's the SADAS Pass project to award to day wireless for four hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we also have a pay estimate to Jim Dean, this is for number eight, and for four hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. And that should be the last pay estimate for the winter time. We'll have another one, and we'll have a couple more in the spring when they come back to start paving. Courtney is shut down until the spring. Design, we're still in the same, our plans and specs are being reviewed for Rock Creek Bridge and the Federal Safety Program, and we're working on the alignment and to start getting ready for right away on Sundale and Old Highway Eight. As far as the east end goes, the crews are responding to weather, winter weather, and same with the west end, sounds like we're gonna have some winter weather this, this year. Facility is the same, Pioneer Center, our units are being commissioned today as we speak. We're also installing units.
Is that like you break a champagne bottle over them, or?
Yeah, kinda. Actually, they're being plugged into the software, so they can be fixed or set remotely. So our supervisor here can set them via an app on his iPhone.
So that way, when they get too hot this week, they can turn them on.
Yes.
Cool down.
Yes, exactly.
Or diagnose problems that come up, so.
Work the bugs out by next summer.
Yeah. We are also installing HVAC units here at courthouse for the, we didn't, we didn't have them installed for we, we're upgrading the ones that were there, are getting installed. They're installed, sorry, they're just moving the HVAC stuff around, the piping around, or the remodels at the courthouse. Radio sites, it's on Galsport Community Center, sorry, jumped. I, yeah, I went down and met with a couple members of the community council last Thursday afternoon, and so I could give them a key, and we could talk about the painting. They're, they painted, they're done. They wanted, I told them, this is your window, we'll give you till Wednesday of this week, and then, because we have floor covering scheduled. And they did it this weekend. They wanted to do me to pass on a thank you to the board for getting them painted and starting to upgrade the community, said they have a lot of other ideas, but I said, well, you know, let's one thing at a time, one thing at a time. But they were thankful, they're happy that we're making strides forward on the community center. And the bathrooms will look really good when they're done. So we passed that on. I said, the radio site is, the awards on the agenda today. And I wanted to get on the other follow-ups, I wanted to give you an, as an update on the RCO grant, I actually heard from them the other day, and they postponed the award, which I kind of expected honestly till mid-January. But they did say they have ninety-nine apps for twelve point nine million dollars. They have three million dollars to award. So they say their challenge is a little tougher. I said, it's okay, I only expect a couple.
Just want two.
But we'll see, I, you know, I'm, you know, with the supply shortage, I'm a little thin on horse heads, so I might might not be able to get that, but. And that's all I have on the list, unless you've got something?
No, I just wanna thank you guys. I, I kinda counted up how many meetings it's been for me, and just being conservative, it's about seven hundred and twenty-five times meeting with the board in the past fourteen and a half years, so. And lots of other things in between. So, thank you.
Is this your last meeting as well?
Yes, yeah.
Well, thank you again.
It's when the confetti falls out of the ceiling.
Yeah.
Old bricks from the old building.
Yeah, yeah, old bricks fall out of this.
Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Anderson?
No questions, I just wanted to say thank you to Gordy for all of the time you've put in for Clickatet County, and I'm sorry, I won't be there to be available for your retirement party later today, but. Thank you. So you know, I wish I was there.
Thank you.
No, I'll save my comments for later.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
The chair is okay. Um, I wanted to show this. I've worked with a lot of projects. And I really appreciate all your support. And, you know, from the airport to everything, airport to community center and Clickatet.
Right.
We've been very successful.
Yes, we have.
Wanted to give you this, somebody gave me this quite a while ago. It's an old picture. It should bring back, this is one of the first things we ever did.
All right. I'm so intrigued. Oh, okay, yeah.
It's yours now.
Oh, I do remember this, yeah, yeah. This was, yeah, the pioneer man down at the Pioneer Center that we were gifted, we were, we were trying to figure out how to appropriately display it.
Is there any way to reopen this photo proposal? To add in another hundred-year-old photo?
They're looking for nine more.
Nine more, yeah.
I think that was from two thousand nine, Dave.
Yeah, that was a long time ago, yeah. All right, thank you. I will put this, I have one that was, it's about the same era, was when Governor Gregoire came for a visit, and there's, I got, I was elected to be the, the greeter. And it was particularly stressful because for some reason, there was a bunch of protesters. And I don't even remember what they were protesting, but there was like a group, and so I was coordinating with the State Patrol, because we were like, well, we could there really is no back door to the Pioneer Center, and to her credit, I will say, she said she didn't care, she would. And so she just went out and engaged with the protesters, but then we had, and it probably was not something we were even supposed to do, we thought, oh, it'd be a really good idea, you know, the governor's coming for a visit, and there had been some, that was back in the day when we could disagree on, on policy, and it was not, like, I got along fine with her, even though a lot of times there was things that we were on the opposite sides of what I thought. She was actually a pretty good friend to us in Clickatet County, despite that. So we had this gift basket of products of, I had mentioned it to was then Mike Cannon was the, was the economic development, and I said, you know, it'd be nice to have, you know, kinda showcase, we never, the gov, we haven't had a governor here for a long time, things from Clickatet County, so that she'll remember us. Well, they went all out, and they had this giant basket of like everything you could think of, and they, you know, it was like, well, you know, we thought we needed something with, you know, Clickatet County wheat in it, and, you know, beef jerky and wine and different product, you know, and stuff. So we had this big basket, and I was, I was, I had to make this presentation to the governor of this thing, and there's a picture of, and I don't know what I said, but it was, she found it quite humorous, and so there's a picture of us with a governor, you know, with a big gaffawing with me, too, and this basket of, so I, I will, these will, these will go together.
All right.
And Rex is in that one as well.
Of course he is.
Yeah, of course he is, so, all right, well, thank you very much, and I will, I will speak with you later. That's great.
It's gonna be a day of memories for you.
Apparently.
All right, we'll move on to Emergency Management Director Jeff King with the Department of.
All right, good morning, sir. So do have a few things on your consent agenda today that didn't get on here, but time I finished this last week. The radio system is functioning normally at this time, or my note at the top, we do have some power management units that are throwing alarms off of Indian Hill, but that's been determined not to be a, an actual failure. There is some failure in the alarm system that's causing them. They're not actually failing. Otherwise, we were able to mitigate the Kesar Ridge microwave interference right after my last meeting five weeks ago. And that workaround has now been recommended by both tier three and tier one support providers to be the permanent solution. So we're moving forward with making that workaround a permanent solution, which is using a four point nine, not to get too far in the weeds, a different bandwidth microwave off of Kesar than, than we have been using. But we're working on that, that, that workaround. Place those antennas and that equipment temporarily, now we just have to make those installations permanent, so. We'll be working on that in the coming weeks, but right now it's working flawlessly, so very happy about that. Also, under the maintenance item, we have a couple things there that have been fixed, the Clickatet grid power off alarms not reporting, and both Juniper and Bickleton sites. Alarm connectivity issues were resolved in the last few weeks after, since I've been here last. Still working on flat top and the annual report from tier one and tier three both. Leases also still ongoing. The radio project, still working with the tier one maintenance provider on making sure that we get the appropriate public safety microwave link from SADAS to emergency management facility, the prime site, as well as that microwave link, a separate one. So it's less expensive for the security camera system up there. Conducting meetings with county IT, AdCom, and that tier one support personnel to make sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck. Also, one of those is the equipment that we've had in stock that I've been able to, to acquire surplus, both microwave equipment and radios and, and other equipment, using that in the most effective way so that we can save money and not have long lead times for equipment ordering. Any questions about the radio system or the radio project? Moving on to nine-one call taking and public safety radio dispatching. Staffing is improving, we had one more trainee be released from initial training on the twelfth, or ninth of this month, and is doing very well. Immediately, I was called upon to cover some shifts, we had a couple of people call out sick at the same time, which could have put us in a bind, but we're much better off than we're definitely a few months ago, when we got these two new trainees out of training in the last few months. Still have two slots open, two communications officers out of the schedule, so, you know, as long as nobody is on vacation out sick or anything, we can cover twenty-four seven without overtime, but as soon as someone's, has to be out, then that's overtime automatically still. Still using the casual temporary comms officers until we get past that condition. One of them specifically, as well as our regular casual to fill those shifts. We are in the process now of vetting the applications that we have, new applicants, and we'll be scheduling interviews in January and hiring two or three people, we'll see how that goes and who we get, what seems appropriate. Put those people into training as soon as possible in January. On the operations and training side, some of these things are still pending. Nine-one phone system update project, text to nine-one. And the state access system audit, actually, they're doing remotely, it's a technical audit, those are all three pending or in progress still. We're also, excuse me, we've been engaged by the Sheriff's Office to integrate their body cameras and their vehicle cameras video downloads into the CAD system and record management system that we own and facilitate for all law enforcement in the county, so that when they download their videos, that that gets tied directly and automatically to the case and the CAD file. Should improve the workflow greatly, but it'll take some coordination in this project to integrate that, their system and, and ours. Held a meeting with IT and Buildings and Grounds just on Monday, yesterday, to discuss the monitor upgrades for the dispatch consoles. We got those rails in early unexpectedly, and so we moved right away, this came in on the twelfth, we're moving right ahead, Public Works is being accommodating so that they can get those new mounts installed at all four stations, and then IT is gonna come in at the same time and put those new monitors at two of the stations. The next two stations will be upgraded next year. When IT has the new PCs that need to be replaced, because all, all those PCs have to have the video cards upgraded to handle more monitors. So that'd be a great improvement in their capabilities and their workflow and efficiency. Users agreements are moving forward. I have been engaged with City of Goldendale for their user agreement renewal, which expires December thirty-first. I believe it was on the city council's agenda last night. I haven't heard any pushback yet. I have not heard from White Salmon, but that agreement expires in February, so. Waiting, I, I sent that renewal to them a few weeks back and just waiting to hear from them. Fund one oh seven cash balance, we're working on determining our best options still, met with fiscal manager on Friday of last week, and planning to meet with fiscal manager and new auditor in January to figure out what our best options are for that cash balance situation going forward, a permanent solution. Any questions about nine-one dispatch? On the emergency management program side, I'll start out with, I emailed each of you the link to the what was it? Large battery facility webinar that state commerce put on, that was, I said, one of my better webinars or information seminars that I've attended on that subject, so. Commissioner Sodder, I know it might not be relevant to you anymore, but you could be interested. It, it not only delves with who's using these large storage facilities in the state now, which are public utilities and others, but also the hazards and risks involved and the emergency response that needs to be in place and that pre-planning and training that needs to be there, so that's particularly why I found it interesting, and it's being done across the state successfully. If it's done right, I think it can be done safely. So back to the top of the written agenda there. On Thanksgiving Day, in the evening, I had a hazmat incident that I responded to at the request of Glenwood Fire Chief and State Patrol. There was five hundred plus gallons of premium gasoline fuel spilled at the Glenwood Station.
Wow.
Yes, it was mostly contained within the tank containment area, it was an overfill from the distributor, pulled the truck in, filled up the tanks, they had evidently unofficially what, what was relayed to us by the store manager was that they misread the amount of fuel that they needed, brought X amount, and started to put it into the tank, and it overflowed, I guess, sooner than they expected, and before they could get anything done, they, they spilled over five hundred gallons.
So you must have been in there eating a burrito or something.
I, I, it wasn't discovered actually until the next day, and I won't comment on that. It was almost twenty-four hours later, if not a little more, that it was actually discovered by someone passing by, a volunteer firefighter, and reported, but that.
Was a small pond of.
Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, you know, the premium gasoline smells, and I don't know why somebody else didn't report it sooner, but yeah, he's evidently taking a walk after his Thanksgiving dinner and smelled it, he lives right across the road, so.
Wow.
But, yeah, it, it took some effort because, you know, we don't get too many of these hazmat spills, State Patrol is designated in our C E M P to take command of all hazmat incidents in the county.
I'm assuming State Patrol is gonna investigate how the guy pulls the pump out of the tank and gives realizes it's everywhere, but doesn't report it.
So I'll finish by saying the State Patrol, talking to the local sergeant while he was in route, and him and I talking on the phone while I was in route, of course, that was a very icy night getting to Glenwood. We called out Public Works to gravel the roads incoming from both the Golden Bill side and White Salmon side, because we knew a response cleanup crew, as well as local responders would need to get there, and it was just a sheet of ice. So coordinated with the local chief via radio to start with and made some recommendations, we got the phone trailer and the boom containment trailer from Benjen out there, another fire district chief that has some hazmat experience also in route, once he cleared a medical call. Once I got there, we started to coordinate and figure out really what was going on the ground, and that this business is not only on reservation land, it is owned by the Tribal Land Management Company. So at that point then, State Patrol can't take command, so we had to call tribal police and wait for one of them to come out that night, take command of the incident. So for those reasons, I can't answer your question as to what that investigation would look like.
Mr. Chair, I, I needed to, I need to upstairs. We discussed last week, the committee is
Yes.
Very
Excited.
It'll be a turnover.
All right. So I'll say thank you for all your years of service and your work with me, I appreciate it, congratulations, whatever you do next, glad to have worked with you. Okay. But that was a significant incident in the county, especially for the Glenwood Fire Department and others, so we spent the majority of that night into the next morning figuring that out. The county outdoor burn ban code update, I've sent emails to Casifa, they're hopefully still trying to Sent emails to Casifa. They're um hopefully still trying to get uh members that wanna participate on that. Advisory Committee and I'm also have reached out to the undersheriff to uh advise me on that committee as well. As that will be the sheriff's office that has all the enforcement. Responsibilities for any violations of the burn ban. And just for clarification, because I've been approached by some. Fire uh district. Volunteers and and staff um about what we should put in that for. The legalities of when you burn, and to be clear, the the burn ban code is gonna be about the processes. For. The county instituting and rescinding a burn ban, not um issuing permits, therefore we can't. State law or District Seven who does issue permits, um their rules will um apply at that point. I did not hear from the board that it was your intention for the county to start issuing permits uh for burning outside of a burn ban. That's a totally different thing and that would probably entail a fire marshal.
I don't uh I don't plan on issuing permits or waivers. So whatever the code needs to be to make sure I don't have to issue a permit, we're aware.
Yep, and so that is what, you know, my draft has in it and all the thinking behind it is that. The processes for instituting and rescinding a burn ban to county level and then what is legal during a county burn ban. So that would be hopefully to encompass the things that some of the things anyway. That were. Um being asked for waivers for, right? So if 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 this, if if having. An outdoor flame during a burn ban is safe under a waiver, then it it should be safe under that burn ban. So, yes, that is my intent, but I wanted to make sure.
Institute the burn ban.
It depends, and it's different by zone. That's the reason that we created the zones. Zone one, East County can be anywhere from uh April fifteenth. I don't think we've ever done it on the first, but April fifteenth, May first, all depends on the conditions. And then Zone Two, Central County, and Zone Three can be anywhere from June first to July first.
The reason I ask is because in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna. Start instituting deadlines. Uh I'm getting projects done and I know you've been working on this one for years. Your deadline.
Yes.
Is this needs to be done, accepted through the board, signed off on before we institute a burn ban.
That's my intent, yes. That's the message that I heard loud and clear um this fall and that I was, I'm working under, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that one was crystal.
Appreciate that, thank you. Yes, and as we go through this process, I'll keep you updated. If you wanna have individual conversations, once I get that advisory committee's input or. If I get enough people with Casifa that really wanna, you know. Commit to that, then yes, that's a winter project that'll be done sooner rather than later. But it will take some time. Um to make sure we get it through legal and everything else, cause there's, in my research, there's a lot of different. Burn ban codes and ordinances out there at the county level all across the state. Some of them get way down in the weeds and uh some of them like ours currently keep it at a very high level. And uh of course, there's a big difference between what's on the west side of the mountains and what's on the east side of the mountains, what's allowed and what's not, so. But my direction was to keep it very simple still, but add in um. The details that we need and during a county burn ban, what is allowed other than just the wording in the. Uh resolution that says, you know, residential barbecues will be allowed, right? That's the only thing that's ever been there, so. We're looking to to clarify and tighten that all up. Uh, training and exercises, um. Program coordinator has been working on uh several different things. Looking into next year and the need to get back to our training and exercising to uh mass casualty incidents. And um active threat incidents, which gets all of the responders' disciplines together. Law enforcement, fire, EMS all come together, um and that's been the most beneficial to get everybody involved and working together. And also building on our all hazards uh UAV uh program and and team across the county. Uh that's going really well, actually, a lot of very. I would say energetic and excited folks that wanna participate in that and provide that service across the county for all disciplines. The program grants you can see there, I won't go into that very long list into too much detail. Everything is uh on track. Or pending with uh long lead times. We are experiencing like everybody else, issues with the supply chain. Actually waited till the last minute, uh can't get the particular radio model that um we wanted and intended. Cause their lead time is clear out into June sometime next year, so we're gonna found a. A uh good alternative and ordering those as we speak, but those challenges are not unique to us. Is just complicating some of our grant activities. On the public outreach side, um. Not just the program coordinator, but our nine-one folks participated in the Candy Cane Lane Parade event here in Goldendale. On the tenth. That was uh well attended, I heard, so we put, we handed out, I think. Hundred packets with nine-one public education, mainly geared towards children, you know. The appropriate use of nine-one, but also to adults like when you call nine-one, you need to know your location and these things and be able to give. You know, clear details so that we can help you, uh as well as the emergency management. Two-week preparedness uh information that we have. The emergency notification system side, we've been working for weeks now to update that uh contact list for county employees. In the event that we have a county government uh closure or delayed opening and so on. So working on updating those emergency notification lists for each department as well as each building. Cause if it's not a winter storm event or such, uh we can also reach those. Buildings or departments individually and give them notifications as directed by either the board or a director or an elected. For that department or office. Uh the FEMA flood mapping, which um I did not attend, coordinator did, I believe. Commissioner Anderson was there as well um last Wednesday night. I heard it went well, um it was attended. As well as any of these public meetings go, and I have not heard any feedback as to. Any substantial questions or pushback by the committee. But we did end up advertising that on uh social media and media release, so I know it ended up in the Goldendale Sentinel. Um the week before. It what had happened, so hopefully everybody got the word and was able to attend if they wanted to. Um and the last thing, which I'm sure everybody's aware, said it's gonna be very, very cold. The coming days, extremely cold for us, uh wind chills in the minus twenty-eight in Vickleton, so we're keeping our eye on that. Uh closely because those are extreme conditions and uh we'll see what develops. And that is the end of my report.
Commissioner Anderson, you have anything to add or questions or anything like that, sir?
Uh, nothing to add, just that um like Commissioner uh Christopher was talking about uh. Uh getting this done uh with the the burn ban, um hopefully we can get volunteers. Uh but if we can't, we're still, we still gotta move forward. Um and sometimes it's best to get a a good draft out so that the volunteers have something that they can, you know, work with.
Agreed.
Yeah, I like that. Give them the draft and then you have parameter that it doesn't just open up this big jam.
Yeah, and like I have in person, um I anticipate upon that first information, email release. And then the the meeting to get, you know, a whole bunch of input as to. We need to do this, that, and the other thing, and I'm gonna have to rein that all back in because, you know, ideally. There would be a permitting process and that would allow us to have, you know, good, clear guidelines, but there's still guidelines. In state, whack and RCW, what you can and can't burn and all those things outside of a burn ban, so we're gonna follow all those. And uh, yep, I'm prepared to manage that process. I've thought that through and I know what I can expect.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Um, I have one thing on our um in our packet today. Uh before us, we have a request for budget transfer within department or Fund One Oh Seven. So I just wanted clarification, so. Um, it looks like you're short wages and benefits and you were transferring money from insurance repairs and maintenance and small tools and minor equipment. To cover those uh those wages. Um, I just wanted to, I believe I know the answer, but clarify that these wages are for nine-one dispatch. And not the emergency management grant that we discussed personnel before.
That's correct. Yeah, the one oh seven is specific actually not just to uh all communications officers. Is specific to the nine-one call-taking function.
Okay.
And the.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check.
That's correct.
Okay, I have nothing else. Nothing else, Mr. Anderson? Okay, he's still muted, but I think his lips said, no, I have nothing else. So.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mister Rob, do you have anything else? Mister Anderson, anything uh board pending or anything before lunch, sir?
I don't have anything to add this morning.
Well, then I guess I would take the uh motion reserved for lunch.
So moved.
I will step down in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will see everybody back at one o'clock. Thank you. Mister Anderson, you. All right, it is one o'clock and we are going to start the uh regular business meeting of the Clack Tech County Board of Commissioners. Uh we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that uh all three commissioners are president, present. Mister Christopher and Commissioner Sodder in the room and Commissioner Anderson is online.
Hey, Mister Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I will second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been approved and seconded. We will start discussion and I have some discussion.
Okay.
Um, I would recommend that we remove item one A. Uh for for further discussion in January with the new Board of Commissioners.
Okay, from the consent.
Yep, okay, and that is the um airport. Would that be okay with you two gentlemen to pull that until the new board has time to have a discussion or are you guys ready to move on that today?
Um, I'm actually fine with pulling it. I think that's, uh I'm always wanna be sensitive to the fact that. Uh, you know, we're moving on things that it's um, this is a next year and I won't be here next year and I think it's. I think it's respectful to let the new person have their say. I don't know that it will make any difference. And it should make a difference, but I think it should, so I I would be fine. In fact, I will amend my motion. Uh to approve the business agenda noting, pulling um. Number one A from the consent agenda uh for further consideration.
We have a second on that amended motion?
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Uh on the meeting minutes.
Are we okay with those? I was. It was. Commissioner Anderson, are you okay with the minutes?
Yep.
Okay, Mister Chair, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes from December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as presented.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, we will move on to citizen comment. This is time for the citizens to address the board. Uh please your, keep your comments to three minutes and uh give your name and address for the record. We will start in the room. If anybody has a comment, uh come forward. Raise your hand, throw things at us. There we go. Come on forward.
I'm just gonna stand.
That works too, as long as we can hear you in the mic.
So, I wanna keep my comment short and directly to the point. I'm gonna miss you, Dave. I think, I think that you have been a stalwart for this county in small communities. You've done a heck of a good job for every small system that I can think of. You've been a good supporter of making sure that they get their. Fair share of what the county has to offer, and I think they will, um they will miss you too. I think that the new, the new commissioner coming on board will have some shoes to fill, but I think she'll do well. But I, but for me, it's, it's, I'm gonna miss you, so thank you very much for all your time and efforts.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Name for the record, sir. We all know who you are, but.
So I'm, I'm Doug Miller and I'm current P U D Commissioner. Thank you.
Big stuff. Thank you.
All right, we will go online and I see Vern has your hand up. Go ahead, Vern.
Hi, uh good afternoon. I'm here again to praise Dave Sodder. Um, Dave, I know it's your, it's your last day. Um, I just wanted to go uh tell a couple little anecdotal stories about Dave. It's kind of a roast time, Dave, so hang on. Um, I got, I was fortunate enough to move into into the county um and become Dave's neighbor just as he started. His job as a county commissioner, um and I've got to see him flourish for the last sixteen years. Uh it's been just an honor to be associated with him as a commissioner, as a neighbor. The issue that I had with Dave was when he was my neighbor, I go down to borrow a tool or something and, you know, you would. Always do the neighborly thing and say, how's it going, Dave? If you had an hour. Because the man just loved his job and would just be effusive about all the things he was excited about and what was going on. And just was so fun to be a neighbor of a commissioner and saw, it taught me how. You know, uh, politics can be good and how how great a job Dave did and how much he loved it. As you all know, I've been a regular watcher of the Board of County Commissioners and involved, been involved with it, mostly thanks to Dave. Um, and. Dave, I think the ultimate compliment I can give you is that three years ago, when, or I guess it was two. When you got the two junior commissioners on both sides of you, we were all a little worried um that they wouldn't be able to keep up with you. But I think under your example and training, um I feel very confident that the county will continue on. Um and do well because of what you've done. So, in closing, um I wanted to give you a little sea service thing. This comes from Harry and me and all our neighbors. Uh Bravo Zulu, Dave, for those sea service folks who don't know, that's a call sign for somebody at the end of the mission when they've done it really well.
Thank you, Vern.
Very good. Thank you, Vern. And and I'm gonna allow you to have rebuttal if you want.
No, no, I'll, I'll wait.
All right, we'll go back in the room. Please come forward and uh state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Jim Smith, Clickitack County PewDie General Manager. Um, Dave, just, uh, wanted to come over, uh, and say thanks on behalf of all of your staff. We've watched over the past bunch of years, we've worked together and, and our staff, county staff have worked with PewDie staff very well. And one thing I've always noticed, um, has been remarked on in our office is the support you provided for the people doing the work. So I just wanted to make sure that you had heard that. If you don't hear it directly from your staff, from folks who work with them. So I wanted to say thank you for that and thank you for the support that you've given us. We've tried to do the right things by the community and for, uh, your taxpayers or customers. They're, they're one and the same. We'll miss you a lot. Really appreciate the collaboration.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, we will go back online. Mr. Dana Peck, has your hand up? Go ahead, Mr. Dana Peck.
Oh, just not a lot to say except thanks. Boy, what a great time working with you over the years. And all the best to you with whatever comes next. Just been, been a total pleasure knowing you and total pleasure working with you and thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you, Mr.
Assuming it was directed to me.
No. Thanks, Dana. All right, we'll go back in the room. Any hands in the room? All right, please step forward. One of you, you can arm wrestle forward if you want, but I think she's got you, Dave. She's gonna arm wrestle that guy. State your name for the record, please.
Kathy Moco Goldendale. Just wanted to say, David, what a super job I think you've done over the years. I think I might have met you probably around eighteen years ago. I think you think Joan introduced you to us all and, uh, I think you've done a really good job with everything from building buildings to, uh, everything, the fairgrounds, everything is really super and, uh, I feel very badly that in the last, it seems in the last couple of years, things have kind of gotten more negative than it seems like they used to be. And can't be any fun. But, uh, but you all have dealt with it very, very well. Anyway, super job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Ms. Moco. If anybody hasn't figured out the, uh, theme of the day, Mr. Sodder refused to have a retirement party.
Yeah.
So, uh, since this will be his last meeting, we are hoping to send him out with merry wishes um, and whatnot. So we will go back online. Um, I see a hand, Gabrielle Gilbert.
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, Commissioner Sodder, thank you for everything you've done and for the service in the county. Thank you so much for elevating this conversation about childcare as infrastructure. Um, I will make you work your last day and just ask how it went with contacting the North Dakota County Commissioners in McKenzie County concerning how they did childcare and if you've received any response from them. I also wanted to quickly, uh, just put on the record the hard work that was done to craft the new mental health services. I only asked that in this foundation of crafting and the boards in which people are participating in that the Latino voice is also present at that table. Um, there is a, a lot of issues concerning mental health and the community. There are also issues of how, um, some of their loved ones in a mental health crisis call, uh, law enforcement and then, uh, the distrust happens if these individuals are taken into custody. And so I really feel it's important that the Latinos are sitting at the table and, um, their community is represented as you're building up the mental health, um, criteria in the county, um, from the ground up. And then last but least, um, it became, uh, a little news that, uh, secondhand Rose could be on the chopping block. Uh, and I'm asking for however, uh, grant dollars and or county dollars, um, are used that they would get into secondhand Rose and binge in. It's a, been a lifeline for community members and, um, to be able to have a shopping experience. It has generated, um, um, a good profit prior to COVID, but because of COVID, um, it took a hit and I think it's an important, um, it's an important business that should, um, continue, um, to exist in the community and look forward to the county addressing how they can assist. Again, uh, childcare is infrastructure and I look forward to the day that you are invited to the ribbon cutting for a childcare facility in the county. And thank you so much for everything you've done and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I, can I respond? Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Go ahead, Mr. Sodder.
Uh, yeah, Gabrielle, thank you for the kind words. I have made contact and, uh, I've had a pretty short conversation, but I am, uh, what was important to me was to try to get the contact information so I could hand that over to my, uh, successor because obviously this, this conversation needs to continue, uh, after today. And so I'm, they're very proud back there and they, they want to share what they learned. So, um, and now whether i- if it is, um, you know, if it'll work here or not, that will be up to, uh, the community and future board as far as if there's a, if there's a way to make that work.
Thank you, Commissioner Sodder. Um, we'll go back in the room. Anybody want to? Here we go. Mr. Barta, please step forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dave Barta, Goldendale. A couple facets today. First of all, I think it's item sixteen on your agenda, at least it was on the wall. The state has passed radio up, update. I hope that that is part of the consent agenda and it will be approved today. I recognize that the quote was significantly higher than projection, but, um, as a rural seven fire commissioner, since January first of twenty nineteen, we've had seventy-five calls that were only for our services, not including EMS, uh, not including Clickitack Valley ambulance and not including law enforcement. Uh, we regularly do mutual aid with Yakima Nation, especially on fires. But we also support, I guess it would be Yakimoff five, District five on accidents that they can't get to. Then that is a hole for radio. We can't talk out of it. Um, actually, we used to be able to get self-traffic in some places, but it's poor. So completion of that, even though it's expensive, will be very helpful and I hope that you will approve that, uh, today. Secondly, as a private citizen, uh, thank you, Commissioner Sodder for your service. It's possible we have not always been on the same side of fence on everything. However, I do recall a couple of things in my prior edition in life when I worked with kids a lot. Uh, your boards always approved our at-risk youth, uh, and that is an incredibly important thing. What we did with that money at Goldendale Middle School was we supported kids who were academically really failing, making choices and, and really try to support them and get them to where they could, uh, individually, uh, have a person who worked with them to get their grades up. So it was very important, dollars. I recall you coming to and not that you ever had any meetings to go to, but you even came to Maryhill Museum and met with the World War Two Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Committee and supported that effort and committed county dollars to that and I appreciate that. And lastly, and probably most importantly in your mind, was when you came and flipped burgers at the middle school in front of.
I think I still have a scar for that.
It was always windy every single time and we really appreciated that you showed up. So thank you for your work and thank you for being there.
Thank you, Mr. Barta. I will, uh, take a quick response to the part of that, the nine one one tower. Yes, I've, I've had uh, meetings with the fire chiefs when I ran for office and it was my goal to have that thing built uh, at worst case scenario this year. Uh, is that, uh, estimate for concrete well above what I want to pay? Yes. Um, could people potentially die if we say no? Yes. Um, so I will be a yes. Uh, anybody online? Lisa Evans has your hand up. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Lisa Evans from White Salmon. Um, I just wanted to say thank you very much to Commissioner Sodder for your sixteen years of service. Um, I think I, uh, really kind of got to know you a little bit, um, in an I sixteen thirty-nine meeting that, uh, you, uh, helped kind of mediate here in, uh, um, in White Salmon a few years ago. And I was so impressed by how you handled that meeting. And then since then, you know, I've called you a couple of times. I've asked for your advice on how to run good meetings and, uh, and I just want you to know that, um, you know, I, I didn't necessarily have any leadership uh, ideas in mind other than just trying to run my family well and, but as leadership opportunities come up, um, I've just felt more confident running meetings because of the example that you have set. And I've pursued further, um, you know, mediation training and leadership training because of, you know, that, kind of that solid foundation and example that you set in, uh, in what a good meeting can look like. And so I just wanted to say, you know, uh, just outside of your elected office, you've had a definite impact on me. Um, and when I get complimented on a meeting, um, you know, I, I really know that that's due to you. So I wanted to pass that on and let you know that, you know, your, uh, your legacy, your reputation lives on in lots of different ways. And I really want to thank you for that.
You.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
No, I'll, I'll defer. Just, yeah, I'm storing them up, making my notes.
Anybody else in the room would like public comment? Come on forward. State your name for the record.
For the record, I can be on any topic. It's.
I'm Roger Gadway, uh, Chair of the Snowden Community Council. And first I'd like to then congratulate Dave Sodder on his job as Commissioner. It's always been a pleasure to work with you and, and productive both when I was with senior services and with the Snowden Council. Uh, so I don't know if you've received the letter that we sent. Good, yeah. There's, uh, two issues that the council wanted to bring to your attention and the first was, uh, the issue of the incommunicado at the fire station. Emergency services plans instructions always say that if you have no other contact, go to the nearest fire station. Well, our Cherry Lane Fire Station has no contact with the outside world when the power goes out either. And there's a fiber cable that runs right by it, the infamous unused fiber cable and, uh, uh, our request is that you work with the fire district three to come up with a solution to getting them hooked up to that cable. And, uh, hope you can be, be helpful in doing that.
Okay, good.
Yes, glad that you're passing that along. What was the second thing? Oh. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, we, we were particularly wanted you to sign up with the off, with Department of Commerce to get their assessment of the broadband needs. They're willing to do that for free, which is the right, right price. So, uh, all it takes is for, for the commissioners to ask them to do that. You can define the areas that you want to examine than the service needs and possibilities and, but we certainly would want Snowden to be one of them. But I know there are other communities, Glenwood and probably Houston and Mickelson probably that are also interested in, in getting it. This seems like a real opportunity to, to get the, what's always been lacking is people have ideas, but nobody's really worked out the feasibility and what's, what will pencil out and what won't. So I think that's a real opportunity. And, and then I, there's a need to have somebody in charge of. And we're asking you to designate staff to be in charge of keeping up with the broadband situation. So that, uh, grants coming up will be able to, to know what's coming and also have the information consolidated from the study to apply for grants that are expected in the last quarter of next year and this first quarter of the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Gadway. If you stick around, we, uh, all kind of comment at the end usually. So you might actually hear some comments back from that one.
Okay.
Um, one twenty-two, do we have anybody else online that would like to speak? Do you have time? I guess there's seven more minutes, so.
I recognize there's, there's one.
Hi, I.
Go ahead, Beth.
Hi, um, I'm used to speaking to little people, not big people, so I'll do my best, but, um, my name is Beth Sodder and I want to thank you for giving me a chance to make some public comments. Um, I've been married to David for thirty-two years. Half of the time, he's been a commissioner. And these last sixteen years, he's honorably represented all the people of Clickitack County. And I want everyone to know he's taken that vocation seriously. That's not always been easy and through the years, he's strived to help all who sought his assistance. David, you are truly one of the hardest working, kindest people I've ever known. You're a problem solver and anyone who sought your help has received it. You're respectful and you strive to stay professional even when you're tested and you rise above with patience. I want all of David's constituents and his coworkers and all the Clickitack County employees alike to know this. He's always had your best interest at heart. So thank you, David. You're a great man and it is my immeasurable honor to be your wife. I wanted to be the last person to make public comment because I wanted to be the one that says the best things about you. Um, thanks for treating everyone who's blessed to live here in our county fairly. Thank you for your service to Clickitack County and all the people who live here. And coincidentally, I saw this white pickup coming up the road and I thought, what is he doing? He's coming home. It was Will, but Will's here too. And we just wanted to say thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Sodder. Does Will want his three minutes? We could put him on the spot.
I don't know about three minutes. Uh, I did just happen to be driving by, so I'm happy. I did not prepare anything. Um, I will say that, uh, I'm, I think I'm very lucky to have had, uh, your service at the county as an example. Um, I know that how much hard work you've put in there, uh, was always easy for me to see. And I think anybody, um, that, that talked to you or was ever involved in that could see how much you cared about that and that's been great for me. Um, in my personal and professional life, like having you as an example. Uh, so thank you and I'm proud of you. I'm happy you made it. And, um, I'm looking forward to you getting to enjoy your, your next step, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. All right, it is now officially one twenty-five. So we will end public comment and go into responses from the board and I will start with Commissioner Sodder.
Well. Don't cry, sir. No, no, I know. It's, yeah, I guess I'm not a crier, but.
I am, but I'll.
No, um, I'm gonna work my way through my list, so I'm gonna stay professional. Uh, first off to, to, uh, Doug and Jim with the PUD. Um, I have, um, really valued the working relationship between the county and the PUD. And, and as I understand it, that didn't always exist as far as there was, uh, times when there was tension uh, between the, the two entities. Uh, I always found it and I, I really appreciated, uh, what you said about, you know, we, we actually are all serving the same constituents. And I think that was something that the Board of Commissioners and the, the PUD Board and staff at both places understand that and have really embodied that and that we do look after the interests of everybody as a whole. So thank you for that and I'm sure it will continue. You know, life goes on and there's, uh, there, there is lots of stuff I think we can all be proud of that we've accomplished. Um, Ms. Moco. Kathy, I don't, it may have been a little longer than eighteen years. I don't know, maybe a little bit longer since I've been in here for sixteen years. But I, I do remember some of my fondest memories are actually having meetings at your house. You were always a very gracious hostess. Uh, and I, although I, the first time I went out there, like everybody, I didn't actually know where you lived. And I thought I, if like a typical, um, And I thought I, it like a typical um, I'm trying to think of, how can I say something about my gender that's appropriate, but it's like I, I'm not really good about asking directions. And uh, so I met some of your neighbors and I did eventually find your house. So those, but those are some of my fondest memories. Mr. Barta, yes, I really appreciated um, the work at the school. Uh, I liked flipping burger, I love doing that kind of stuff anyway. Uh, and then also the at-risk youth program, that, the dollars for that, that is, um, that's one of the things I'm most proud of. I don't want to take credit, but I kind of can because everybody else is gone now, so that was here when that started, but we did look at, you know, because we were funding dollars through um, the Sheriff's Department that was supposed to be going towards helping uh, youth. Which it was a good program, but we kind of had the idea of, you know, it was, was there a way that we could get it more directly right to the, to the kids and we're like, we already have all these organizations that work with kids every day, I'm married to one of them. And let's, you know, and so I, I initially made contact with the Superintendent's uh, Association and they were like, you wanna, you, you wanna give us some resources and I, you know, we were apologizing because of the size of it, we really felt like, because it's, it's twenty-five thousand dollars is what we put to that, which for us was like budget dust. But, you know, for you folks, that was a huge deal and so I hope that continues in the future. I don't want to set up my successor um, on the spot, but you know, it's a really good program. Uh, and I will tell you the same thing that my wife told me um, many times that, uh, if we didn't fund the White Salmon Youth Center, don't come home, so. Because those were her kids and so that's, that's another really good program, so. Uh, and yes, Sada's Pass will happen, that was always in the plan, I think we, you know, when we were building the new radio system, we had, I think we ended up, you know, we built ten new sites, we needed ten or eleven new sites and we can run long, it's fine.
No, I'm. No, your wife had the thumbs up.
Oh, oh, the White Salmon Youth Center, yeah, so she's just telling you now, Lori, don't, she knows where she, she knows where you live, so um. She's back, um, that um, you know, that was always the plan and we recognized that that, you know, to complete the whole system, we just took a little hiatus for a little while to save up a little more money and we, there, there's, we have the resources. And that's the last piece and it will be constructed and yes, it may be reconsider, it's like I know what my next career should be. I should go back to pouring concrete after I saw that bid, so actually if you held that over until January. No. I'll make you a better deal, but uh, yes, so that will, that will go on. Dana Peck also really enjoyed working with you over the years, um, you were also a mentor, I will say early on. Uh, for me, I, I really appreciate all the advice you gave me over the years. Uh, would give you a call and you are always very gracious in, in sharing your wisdom and, I appreciate that and Lisa, kind words on the, I think you're, I, I remember which meeting you're talking about and it was contentious, but by today's standards, it was a tea party, so um, um, I, I appreciate what you said, but I think today's uh, board or anybody running meetings is much more challenged than it used to be. So the, the bar has definitely gotten uh, much higher. Uh, for that Vern loved your, you uh, you are, um, you are accurate in that, uh, I did have to be careful, nobody ever left and so that's all you'd have to have done, but it's uh, I was, uh, and still am, I am very proud of this county and the accomplishments of this county and I'm not ashamed to, to tell people about them and um, I'm just, I, I feel blessed that I was, able to be a little part of that and it was, really was and is and will continue, it's a big, it's a big team and this is a great place. And we have so much going for us, um, that it's, it's easy to serve in these roles. Mr. Gadway. I remember when I first came in and I was a baby commissioner and you were the, um, I don't know if senior servant, if you, I believe you were the founder, you were the founding director of the department, if not, it seemed like it had been built around you. That you were the, which I don't understand because you seem younger than you were then. That somehow I got older than you and you were so uh, sage and wise sixteen years ago. Um, and but the biggest thing that I took from you was just your advocacy and passion, for uh, seniors and their programs and how important that was, you were, you were such a strong advocate for the, and it made it easy for me and I, I have tried to continue in that role, I have really tried to look after. Um, although I'm, now it's gonna be my own people here eventually, uh, but it, it seemed off in the distance at that time. But I really took that example from you and I, and I thank you for that. We were, and then as you continue, you know, we have interacted over the years after you retired from the county and were the, uh, with the Snowden Community Council, which are, no matter what you hear, they're delightful, so don't believe people. Uh, it's their, they, uh, they have opinions and they're not afraid to share them, but I know you will, you will appreciate that, but I've always appreciated my, my annual visits to the community council up there and have a check-in with the community. So thank you for that. Um, I, I hate to keep doing person by person because I don't want to miss anybody. Um, but I will go finally to my lovely wife of thirty-two years, which I am, I am both, um, proud and slightly upset that you would call in. But um, you know, she does speak the truth as far as the, you know, half of our time together, I've been a commissioner and, so I would just say to you, you know, thank, you know, on behalf of the citizens, thank you for sharing me because it is, people do not realize what a burden it can be uh, to serve in these roles, is that you are, you know, and I tried to do a really good job of balancing um, work and personal, but if you are passionate about things and you also have a great, wonderful, wife and children that are willing to and understand and, and support how important things are. They're willing to sacrifice too, because it's not just you that's serving, it's your whole family. And so to that I say thank you and I couldn't have done the um, what I've done without, without your support, so and we'll, we'll talk when I get them. I just thought you were calling in to remember so that I would bring milk home, but that's, um, I thought, you know, you, you could still text me, it's okay. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's good, so thank you and to Will too and I'm, uh, I think you've learned more public service from your mother than you ever did from me and so I am, I am humbled that you would, say that because you're, you know, I'm, I'm so proud of both of my children. Uh, but you know, Will, uh, Will for folks that don't know us is, he's a police officer in, uh, a neighboring county, in Hooder County and when he uh, decided in high school that he wanted a career in law enforcement, uh, his mother and I both said, why? Uh, not that I, I mean, I, you know, I have nothing but respect for folks in law enforcement, but it's not, generally a career choice that you um, look for in your children. And um, he said then is that, you know, that he believes in public service and this is what he wants to do. And so that's, I'm, I'm super proud of that, so I'm, I'm glad and so with that, I'm sorry if I missed anybody, um, I will, Gabrielle, I will hand off the contact information to my successor and um, and I'm sure she will, look into it and with that I will sign off. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, do you have anything you would like to say?
Uh, I just like to say that, uh, Mr. Gadway, I will get in contact with you offline. Uh, because this has been the, the Dave Comment Show and to my seatmate, Commissioner Sodder. I think Beth said it exactly how we've all felt, your leadership has been um, throughout the years. Uh, your calm, cool and collected demeanor, um, you are the definition of a statesman. Um, I don't think of you as a politician, I think of you as a statesman and someone who I've always tried to emulate and someone I will always respect, so thank you for all your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Yeah, I would just like to echo off of that, so I, I, you know, the general public might think that, you know, we're at each other's throats and we disagree on things more often than we agree. And I think we actually disagree on very few things. And when we do, it's a gentlemanly conversation and, you know, you respect the other's opinion. Um, but I would, I would echo what Beth said and what Commissioner Anderson said, that I've always seen you as a, as an elder and a statesman and even if we didn't agree on a topic, I've always admired the way you handle yourself. In handling those issues and it's, it's something that I hope I can model myself. After, um, so again with what Beth said, I, I just want to thank you for your service, your sacrifice and your family's sacrifice doing this, because I don't think most people understand that. Your family is in this, it isn't just you. So with that, we will end public comment unless staff would like to make any comments for today. Okay. I will uh, word prerogative, I will go back to the audience one more time and call on Commissioner-elect Laurie Zoller. Yes, you did. Had to have the last say.
That's okay.
We were supposed to give that.
I wanted him to get, you know, gavel you down or something.
Here it begins. I waited too long because I am not an emotional person and this was very hard for me. I've been really choked up, um, how much I appreciate you over all these years, just like Kathy, watching you, step into Joan Fry's shoes and you've done incredible. And as Jake said, I've never ever applied the term politician to you, you have led with your heart for the people. All the work you've done has shown, it's always from your heart first, for the good of the people. And I appreciate that, I hope to carry that on. And I promised you from the beginning, if I ran, that I would pick up your projects and make them finish and move on from there. And I found out right away how busy you were. I don't think anybody knows how many hours and how much work you've done, clear to Olympia and back. And I just recently was in Olympia and everyone there loves you just as much as we do. And I will miss you, but I'll be in touch, I'll have lots of things to catch up with you.
Thank you.
But thank you, David, for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Zoller. Alright. That was fun.
It really wasn't. I didn't want a retirement party and that was it.
That's what you get for not wanting a party, now it's, now it's been recorded for posterity.
You cannot control what people.
I know. That's true, that's, we've learned that the hard way, that is true. Oh, and just so you know, I am bequeathing you my cup. Mini me. And my stress ball.
With that, we can move on to consent agenda if you guys are ready and payroll and all those other things.
We will, see you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Hey, Mr. Chair, if you're ready for consent, I'm gonna take that first. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, noting we are pulling item one A, uh, for further discussion and so my motion would be to approve, the balance of the consent agenda, all eighteen items since item one had subparts, so there's still eighteen items. This is the end of the year or so, there's, there's lots to get done, so my motion is.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Okay. Uh, next we have um, Pay As of a number eight to James Dean Construction for the Courtney Road Project in the total amount of four hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred and, excuse me, five hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, no retainage and this is for the CRP three four two and CRP three four three Courtney Road Project. My motion is to approve and uh, pay the bill.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay Pay As of a number eight to James D Construction for the Courtney Road Project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And then finally, Mr. Chair, um, I would make a motion to prove accounts payable warrants in the amount of nine hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents for the date ending December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I will second that motion as well.
Here we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Alrighty, moving along rather quickly, uh, Finance Committee update, treasure, Mr. Greg Gallagher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Finance Committee had our um, only meeting in December last Friday. Um, because of the holidays, our normally scheduled days were off. Um, at the meeting, we talked about the opioid settlement. Um, and that the application was um, being prepared and will be sent in here shortly. Those numbers are looking to come in in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we talked about some funds and their cash balances. Um, everything seemed to be fine on some of those, particularly one oh seven seems to continue to be um, positive. And we briefly discussed a landfill deposit that um, on the, because we did not meet in November, the fourth quarter, or the third quarter payment which was posted um, in, I think, October. The general fund was the piece that did not get, you know, that we were short a little bit, so that didn't get, the general fund didn't get as much as we had budgeted for. But there were some other revenue items, um, interest expense being one of them that's come in above where we anticipated. Um, some old business.
Interest, interest revenue.
Or interest, yeah, yeah, sorry, nice expense, yeah, interest income, I was on the revenue side the whole time, Mike.
You're such a trigger.
Just numbers and zeros, lots of them.
I like it on the right side of the ledger.
And the decimal, yeah. Um, and let's see, uh, we did have a um, we had an update on mental health fund and the, any open items. Um, essentially, you know, we, everybody worked really diligently to get that in place. Um, there is a funding issue with that, um, that there was some time that went to it, for a thousand dollars of time, which we hadn't got the deposit yet, so we were working on that. Um, there is a backstop plan to that, which is a potential line of credit uh, that we would put in play at the final board meeting in December if the deposit doesn't come in. The funds have been committed, everything's all ready, it's just a matter, we need to get those dollars and get them deposited. And I was going to check on that before this meeting, but I did not have a chance to do that because we've been in meetings on some, financial software replacement, um, fund, fund one thirty-seven, we did talk about that the um, January, February and March, uh, no, one thirty-five, the January, February and March. REIT money did get moved to the capital like it was supposed to from the beginning, from the budgeting, so that did happen. Um, but we were still working on trying to get five oh six and four oh two moved, which that's the gun range and the old computer, fund that we were going to have, where our hope is to get that done by twenty twenty-two. Um, we've just had some staffing and trying to go in different ways and trying to buckle down on that, we just haven't got it done, but, that's in my office, that's our goal to try to get that done the remainder of this week. Um, we, Jen was not, uh, due to conflict, uh, Jen had a different meeting, so we did not. Jen was not due to conflict. Jen had a different meeting, so we did not have a update on the budget. And. I think that was pretty much about all that we had. We are having a meeting on December twenty seventh at nine thirty. To approve the meeting minutes of. Of the meeting that we just had, and I believe we have one other set from right before there that is going to get approved. So we can. That meeting will only be for meeting a minute approval. That way there than the group that has had it, we will be able to do that. Traditionally, when we've had this. There's always been two of the three members because the board chair has rotated through. But in this time, we'll have a new auditor and we'll have a new board chairperson. So we're going to do that so that all the minutes would be up to date. And approved by the, the group. I guess the final piece of that would be. I'd like to thank. Otter Sorensen for her time with the Finance Committee. I, you know, I've been here for. Eight years as treasurer and I know there was finance committees before that that she has served on. And you know, it's, it's a really nice ti- it's a good. It's a good meeting for us to be able to have the auditor and the treasurer and the board chair in the meeting to be able to discuss. Things like that. And so I want to thank. Brenda for her work and also as it was the last meeting essentially that Jake, Commissioner Anderson was on, want to thank him for his time to the committee as well. And. Our next meeting is scheduled for January thirteenth, but we will send that out and make sure that would be the normal. Second and fourth Friday, but I will validate that with the new folks and go through as we go, get closer to that. So.
Isn't the tradition, the incoming new chair buys lunch? Yes, yes, that's right. What I recall, yeah, I think so.
All eating heart healthy.
So any questions, Jake? Do you have any further comments? Did I miss anything that wasn't on the, that's the list I have?
No, you always do a great job, Summit of Treasury Gallagher. And I think thankfully, we're in a situation where the Finance Committee will have your guiding hand on next year. So it's not. Three new people going into that, because I couldn't imagine what that would be like, having that institutional knowledge. Kind of like the institutional knowledge we're losing with the retirement of Commissioner Soder.
Yeah, he only had two new people to train. You're going to have three.
Ask a follow up?
Yes.
Or it may be between actually the three of you. As far as the opioid settlement money. Ben, can you remind me the dollar? Is I, the, as far as what, like, I know we have committed a portion. To adult probation. And I know it's a, this because we get like a double payment this year.
Year is a double payment, which is just under five hundred thousand. I think it's four ninety five.
Okay, so the, the annual.
Every year after is about two fifty. It's actually two forty seven or something and change. And we committed half of the two forty seven.
Right, two.
Because we didn't want to overdo with the first year payment.
Okay.
And I know that Courtney is eagerly waiting permission to. Meet with HR and put that money to work.
And that's what we have in our notes from the. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from anybody? No, no.
I was just like to say thank you to Mr. Soder as well. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last eight years as a newly elected. So. I appreciate it.
Round two. Expected as much?
No, I didn't. I was. Surprised when I looked up and saw the icon. I was like, oh, this is not going to end well.
Do we have any board pending? Any issues to bring before the board?
I, I do have one when you get a chance, Mr. Chair. Are, I, I just wanted to confirm, we discussed. Are, who we were going to be, if we were going to be supporting. Unanimously, as far as we have to vote for the force board practices, our representative on there. My understanding was that because we can actually split and be one third, one third, one third. If we wished, I just wanted to take the opportunity to advocate for one of the. Candidates, Lisa Janiki is, would be who I would support and I would ask the board to have a uniform. She is excellent. She would be an excellent choice on that. I've had an opportunity to work with her with the last eight years. Skagit County Commissioner comes from a logging company family. You know, undersigns both sides of the business and. Especially on that board to be have somebody that comes from the county side of things. And this is the, the. But also the private sector too. So I think she's in a unique position to really kind of bring both hats to the table. And so. My at least one third vote would be towards her and I would encourage. My seatmates that it, because we have the option of just sending the county vote, which would be one vote. Instead of one third of a vote or two thirds of a vote or whatever. So, but I know that they need that back, I believe by the twenty eighth. And so today would be the last opportunity I could participate. And, and so if we're not going to take action as a board, then I need to take action for my one third of a vote today. So that's what I bring up.
Just wondering if Commissioner Christopher's in consensus with us too and whether we can make a motion to that effect.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And then who's going to send off the county vote? One of you going to send off the county vote or we get a direct stack to send off the county vote? We want to make sure we actually get.
Yeah, I'll volunteer to, I'll, I'll look at the email and see what has to, I'll do it. And if we can, I'll work with Lee and make sure. Or if the chair's got to sign it before the end of the day or something, if it's, whatever we need to do, I'll, I'll make sure we get the vote. That we vote often and early. So. Oh, come on. Too soon.
I'd move that the board supports Lisa Janiki for the Board of Natural Resources position.
I'll second the motions.
Here we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of supporting Lisa Janiki, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Good point. I, I had that one on my radar and. It fell off my radar.
Yeah, I was trying to clear through my, because my, because at some point my email is going to get shut off and. Moved over. And so I was trying to. I'm actually kind of looking forward to that. I will share with a few select people, my personal email. But other than that, that will get transferred over. And so I was trying to clear out. As many of the two hundred and thirty six active emails I have in my, my system right now. So. You're welcome.
It, you'll, you'll find out that you have to be on it.
On it, yeah.
I only have twenty five in my inbox. That's because I clear them every day.
Yeah, I have. It's been a while.
Yeah.
I've got ten thousand if it makes you guys feel any better.
In the inbox? See, I have a file cabinet over there. Everything gets sorted.
Remember, I'm not OCD.
Yeah, I remember I am OCD. So. Anything else, Mr. Soder, for board pending?
I don't think so. Do we? Do we have anything else?
Other than I was hoping, I do see the prosecutor on. I was hoping we can get an update when we get to executive on the Julio. But Mr. Anderson, do you have anything for board pending?
I was just going through my list. I don't have anything.
Alrighty, I don't have anything that's pertinent either. I did, I guess I'll mention to you guys, I did go down and talk to. Jeff Hunter about Title Four Road. We talked to Jeff King earlier about the burn ban. So those are the two things that I said I would do. I'm getting. Pretty. Regularly asked. About the Julio and where we're at and where we're going and. Any updates? Because it's been some time now. So. I'm hoping to have an answer back for that one. Other than that, I don't have any work. So with that, I will ask the prosecutor, is there any possibility or online and can. Give us an executive if we delete everybody else off of Zoom. Hearing none. Must be away. Then answers up. Okay, anything else for the good of the order that needs handles? No, alrighty. I guess I would take a motion to adjourn. There are no workshops scheduled.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. We have no workshop scheduled.
I will second the motion.
A motion in a second brings us to the discussion, which I guess I will have to say. Thank you, sir. And.
It's all going to be fine.
Oh, I'm sure it will. I just, you've done a lot and you deserve to be. Appreciated. With that, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor to adjourn the regular meeting, no workshop scheduled, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We will see you next week.
Have a good day, you guys.